So this is no formal meeting. I'm just gonna have a casual conversation with you. But we are videoing and audioing, and a copy of the DVD will be given to the full council so that they can watch the process. So as you guys are aware, 'cause you were at the meeting, the City Council and Planning Commission held a work session, and they picked people to be part of this committee to do an application process for the vacant Planning Commission position. After that meeting, we posted the notice. It was...the original deadline was the 22nd, I believe. I'd have to check with Tammy Bannick. We received one application, so I met with the mayor and the planning chairperson, Randy Rolet, and we decided that we should extend the deadline a couple weeks, which we did. And we received three applications. I'm going to hand out a packet to you. It has the questions that you're gonna ask, and there's six questions. And some of you have asked, "Well, how come my question wasn't there?" and others are... What I did was, I'm the one that made the final decision. I'm the only one that's seen them. Tammy printed them out for me. And a couple of you had questions that were similar in nature, so we did some wordsmithing. So it really was our intent to try to capture some from all of you and incorporate them into the questions. Nobody else has seen the applications but Tammy Bannick and I. They're not posted on the website because the council packet hasn't been made yet. So tomorrow's our deadline for the 26th council meeting. So after this process, you guys will make a recommendation. We will write it up in a staff report. We'll put it in the council packet tomorrow, and it'll go to the City Council. And they will review it, like they did with the vacant council position, and they will either accept your recommendation, or they could choose to just pick somebody else for that process. All of your email exchanges that you had with Tammy Bannick and I are public record, but we don't disclose those unless we get a public records request. So I wouldn't worry about any of that. I don't think there was anything in there that was just not a process-oriented question. The applicants have not seen who else has applied. And one of the questions I have for you is, "Do you want this to be an open meeting? If somebody walked in and wanted to listen, are you okay with that?" I'm assuming it's fine. We did it for the City Council meeting.
I don't know with an interview, though, how distracting that would be to the applicants.
Well...
I mean, most interviews that I've done for different places have been done...for government agencies have been done, you know, in private. And it is recorded, and everything we wrote down was public, but there weren't other distractions.
So why don't we...raise your hand if you'd like to have it open. One, two, three. And raise your hand if you want it closed. Okay? So we have a tie. And quite honestly, I would just ask that you guys discuss that amongst yourselves on what you're comfortable with doing.
I already said what I thought.
It was my understanding that at the last interview process, there were interruptions from the audience. And based upon that, I'd have to agree with Libby that I don't think that's fair to the applicants. I think I would be...if I was one of the applicants, I'd be a little...
I'll change my vote.
To no? Okay. All right. Do you want...
Was I told wrong? There were...I mean, was I told wrong during that last...there was...
You know, I haven't heard anything negative about the last process. I know in the past, some council applicant processes are in front of the full council in an open meeting. They do interviews.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really at what your discretion is. This is different than an HR personnel matter interview.
Right.
I would think that if somebody walked in on the middle of the interview, that might be disruptive, but nobody's here, so I'm not...I'm not holding anybody out.
And Jackie, I do agree with what Natalie said, and I was one of the applicants at one time. And there was a lot of whispering and talking going on in the back. So I would prefer that we do this.
And I think things should be open. The problem I had was the interviews for the City Council positions. I've never found them online. So the general public, although they were recorded, doesn't really have access or certainly easy access to them.
Right. So the DVD was made specifically for the City Council that asked if they could have a copy of it. And if you guys are recommending that these be posted online, we can talk about that as well. So I really want this to be...
I'm fine with them being online. I just think during the interview process, I think it's only fair to the applicants that there not be any interruptions or anyone getting up and saying something other than us trying to engage with them and find out if they would be qualified and a good fit for the Planning Commission.
Could I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. I would like them to be open for a couple reasons. One is because I think it's really important as we're moving forward that City Council and everyone else is as open and transparent as possible. The other reason I think that it's important is because people who will be sitting on City Council, or commissions, or boards, or anything else, are going to be in front of the public. And it's important to see how...you know, you need to take a little distraction or whatever. I do think that the audience should be advised that there will be no side talk, you know, no interjections or anything else. Or if you feel that you can't do that, then you need to leave now. But I just...I think it's...I think it's really important for us going forward that we're not...it's a public meeting, you know, and we're interviewing people for this city, and I think anybody who wants to attend should be able to. Thank you.
Do you wanna take another vote, Jackie, or what would you like to do?
So if you would like to have the interviews closed to just the committee and the applicant, raise your hands. One, two, three, four. And if you would like it to be open, okay, so four, two. So if anybody comes up before the first applicant, I'll let them know that we're doing interviews, but that we are going to post this online once the council packet has been posted, probably Thursday morning or late Wednesday evening.
But that would be another reason why not to have it open. If the council's not going to get it until Thursday, that just seems like...
I got another reason to have it open.
Mm-hmm.
You miss a lot when you don't get to see things live. There's about 80% of communication is through body language.
And video.
Video doesn't capture it all. I've watched both.
I'd agree with that. I think something looking forward needs to be put in place so that this isn't an issue in future interviews.
I agree.
Some sort of a process to follow.
Yeah, 'cause it's changed a little bit. It's very, you know...
Yeah.
There needs to be something that's more firm so that there isn't any deviation. I'd have to agree with that. The other question I was gonna ask Tammy Bannick is, "What is the process that's gonna be used today as we're evaluating the candidates for...I mean, is there gonna be a vote at the end? Are we gonna write down the numbers on the scoring system? How is that gonna be tabulated?"
That is going to be something that you guys are going to decide, because what we did at the council level when we did the process was we talked how we wanted to do it, so that's up to your discretion.
Okay.
I would make one recommendation as an improvement from the last process is to please explain your recommendation, either individually or collectively, when we get to that point, because I do think it helps to have the reasons why. And then I wanted to be...to be clear that this is only a recommendation to the City So I think I mentioned that the applicants have not seen the questions. They're gonna sit here, and so who is going to start with question number one? And do you wanna just go on down the line, or...
I'll start with one.
You'll start with one, two...
Why don't we just go down the line?
That's fine. And then when we're done with the interviews, we can talk about...we can deliberate, and you can decide how you wanna come to a recommendation. And if you can't come to a recommendation, that's okay, too. That's part of the democratic process, so... Did I answer everybody's questions?
I have a question. Are they gonna come in one at a time?
Yes. There's only gonna be one at a time in here. So I'm gonna let you look at the packet for a few minutes before I...
I have one question.
Yeah.
Go ahead and start passing out. This is...it probably comes from my background because I've done so much evaluation and scoring and everything else. Clear criteria are very important. So I hope that at some point in time, we come up with that. I also hope, as this moves on, whether or not City Council agrees with our recommendation or doesn't agree, that they state why. Thank you.
So you have Bill Preble coming in at 3:45. What we did is, at the top of the paper, we put down what's in the municipal code for consideration of qualifications for the Planning Commission. I'm gonna give Bill a full packet, because these are public documents when he comes in, so he'll know who the other applicants are, and then I will do the same for Candace and Lynn as well. So they'll have the questions in front of them, but the other applicants are gonna wait outside until their turn. So you have one, two, three, four, five, six. And just keep in mind, as Libby mentioned, anything that you write down on this piece of paper will go into a file, and it'll be retained in the City Recorder's office. I don't want that to be a reason why you don't write things down, but I just wanted you to be cognizant of that. And I'm...did Tammy send you the applications already?
Yes.
You've had time to look at them?
I got them.
Okay.
Yes.
So you got a couple minutes. I'm gonna go see if Bill's down there. Make sure...
And none of the questions have been shared with any of the applicants?
No. Now, if you guys are the first ones to see them, me and Tammy are the only ones that have seen them.
A question on that email. I thought it said it went from 3:35 to 4:15, that there were three applicants with 15 minutes each. Let's read that.
So we have one at 3:45, one at 4:00, and then one at 4:15, right?
Yeah. I might have misread the email.
So what did the email say?
I thought it said from 3:45 to 4:15, but again, I may have misread that.
We probably meant that the last one was at 4:15.
Yeah, I read it the same way you did, too.
Yeah.
Hmm, that's gonna be pretty quick.
And, you know, like Susan mentioned, this is...this is something new, that is not required. This is something the City Council has wanted to do. So I think as we go through these processes, we want to try to improve how we're doing it, especially if the council is going to be doing this on a regular basis, yes.
I understood is that the interview process would be between 3:30 and 4:30, and that each interview would be 15 minutes.
But we started at 3:30.
Are we gonna...
4:30, that's what it said.
Are we all gonna take the question, like, you know, you'll take question number one, I'm number five, so I'll take five?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
So I'm number three.
You're number six. It's a good one.
I see the rest of them.
I can read that.
They're all good questions.
Do you have any words that make me giggle?
I'm glad Bill has number six. That one's hard for me to pronounce.
Quasi-judicial?
I'll get on tongue-tied on it, probably.
At least it doesn't have a lot of S's in it. That's where I really have trouble.
Nice tone.
Thank you.
So just so you're aware, we do have some people that are downstairs that wanted to observe. I told them that we've chosen to have interviews done privately. Bill, this is a packet of the questions that were just given to the committee.
Okay, all right.
And I believe if everybody wants to introduce themselves first to Bill...
I think I know most everybody, but go ahead.
I'm Tom Mercer, councilman.
I'm Libby Wentz, Planning Commission.
I'm Susan Liston, Citizen at Large.
Linda Neese, Council.
Natalie Smith, Planning Commission. Hi, Bill.
Hi.
Bill Osburn, resident.
All right, well, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Bill Preble, so if you haven't met me, that's who I am, so... I have a little piece of paper here. These are a lot of notes I have, so if I'm looking down at stuff, this is just reminders, so, for this question comes up, so...all right.
I think we're gonna start with the...
Tom.
Okay.
I've been chosen to start the first.
All right.
I chose myself one of two. Please explain how your profession, trade, education, or prior or present governmental service qualifies you to serve as a Planning Commission.
Well, as I look at the Planning Commission, I guess in my career over the years, I was in construction for 10 years, dealing with all sorts of codes, codes officials. My last 28 years, I worked with Northwest Natural Gas, and in that position, I was working with code officials. In the last 10 years, I was working with not only code officials, but PHMSA, which is a Federal Pipeline Safety Commission. My last 10 years, I was working, putting together our standards and practices for Northwest Natural Gas, which included working with several different entities, not only federal, but state, our counties, State of Oregon, State of Washington. So I've worked with a lot of codes. That's what I've done my whole life. I also have about 28 years in customer service, dealing with people. I consider that the citizens are our customers. If I was on a board, that's basically who I'm serving. And so I have a lot of history of working with different people throughout the town. And out in Gladstone, not only Gladstone, but Oregon and Washington. I've also been experienced in supervising people throughout my career. So I've done a lot of different things. A lot of it has dealt with construction, heavy on construction. Basically, codes, things like that, dealing with people, working with people with code problems, so...okay?
Oh, one moment. Let me just write that down. Okay. Number two. How would you respond to community members who disagree with you on a decision you made as a Planning Commission member?
You know, I would listen to them. I mean, a decision's a decision, and I would hope it would be civil. I've seen some discourse, and you wanna be polite, and I would hopefully have a good reason, and I'll be able to tell them how my decision came about, not just, "Well, this is what it is." In a private meeting, I would like to be able to discuss it and have a good reason why I made a decision that I did, so that they could understand. And not everybody's gonna agree with you. I've watched meetings. People go away disgruntled. But if you can at least let them know why you voted the way you did, it's a long step, big step in trying to understand where everybody's coming from. Not everybody's gonna agree with you. I've been on the side where I don't agree with the decision, but if I listen to people and they let me know how...why they voted, I can understand it.
Please describe to us what you believe your primary responsibility would be as a Planning Commission member.
Well, I guess it'd be...as people come in, I'm assuming they're gonna be coming to the commission for different problems, code violations, things like that. I would hope that I would listen to both sides and try to make my...I don't think our codes and regulations are written in stone here. Everything's a little bit different. You know, if somebody comes complaints because somebody put their building two inches too close to the fence, there's things you have to take in consideration. Maybe the code does say it's too close, but is it gonna be a hazard? I also...could you repeat the question again, so I'm just kinda...
Sure. Please describe to us what you believe your primary responsibility would be as a Planning Commission member.
Okay. Well, I guess to start off also, I truly believe in the Constitution and the rights of the people, and as a homeowner, I believe that's your castle. I also understand that living in a community comes with some responsibility to be a good neighbor. So I would try to weigh those two things together as I make a decision. I mean, you would listen to both sides, but I'm...I think rights of homeownership are a big deal, but not stomping on somebody else's rights because I have a house and I can do what I want. So I guess it would be to be kind of a...determine, I guess, the best course of action as far as the two sides, 'cause you're gonna be making a decision on different things, so...
Thank you.
If that made any sense.
What qualifications and experience are important for us to know about that or not ...that or not on your application? How will this help you to serve residents of Gladstone?
Well, I talked a little bit about my experience as a...in the construction. Also, I have some experience with the City of Gladstone governance on the Parks Department, so I have an idea of how the City of Gladstone operates. I'm getting a better idea as I move along. I've also, like, I've been...I've been involved in the revitalization plan, not technically, but I've gone to the meetings, so I kinda understand what's going on. And being at the council meetings for the last couple years, I regularly attend. I try to regularly attend the coffee with the councilors, so I have a feeling of what's going on in Gladstone. I've lived here 50-some years, so I understand the city. I know the city. You can probably ask me any street in here. I know where it's at. I know the parks. I know the history of it. So I think that goes a long way, and I understand what the city's about. It's a...it's a close city to Portland, but it's also...it's a bedroom community, and we like it. People here like it like that. They like the nice, quiet solitude of being in a smaller city, so... So those are some of the things. Being on the Parks Board, I don't know if I put that on there or not. That's about it.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Natalie.
If you would, please describe to us how you would prepare for a Planning Commission meeting, and how you would go about finding out additional information if you didn't get all the answers you needed based on the packet? And also for land use items, item you were unsure of, how would you go about finding out that information?
That's one thing I'm not sure of, land use. I would...hopefully, there's some sort of resources here, or the county, or the state that I could go to, to look up land use. I'm not a lawyer. I don't profess to be, and I hope I would be able to get some direction for somebody who...the city has somebody who can give me direction on those kind of questions. There's lots of...I would go...depending on what I would look at, I'd look at the packet, and I would go over each item, and I would hopefully...I would...well, not hopefully. I would try to find whatever resources would pertain to those single items, so that I'm prepared when I come, then I'm not surprised when somebody says something or asks me a question up there. I know where the city codes are. I know where the...Clackamas County...I've worked with Clackamas County Building Department a lot. So I think it's a big...I'm good at getting on resources, whether it's a computer or talking to people. So as far as land use, I would hope there's a good resource that I could use that would lead me in the right direction.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill.
Can you explain the difference between a legislative and quasi-judicial process?
Legislative and quasi...what did you call it?
Quasi-judicial process?
Not really. Be perfectly honest with you. I don't even know what the quasi-judicial process...I've never heard that word. You know, legislative, yeah, I understand that, the legislature. But no, honestly, I can't. If you can explain what...I don't really know what that is, be perfectly honest with you.
Okay if I read it?
Yeah, yeah.
The basic difference between the two categories is legislation decisions establish policies for future applications, while quasi-judicial administrative decisions are the application of these policies.
Okay.
It's an entity or an arbitrator or board generally of a public administrative agency which has powers and procedures resembling those of a court of law or a judge, which is obliged to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them so as to provide the basis. A proceeding conducted by an administrative or an executive official is similar to a court proceeding. A hearing...a court may review a decision arising from quasi-judicial proceeding.
So I'm saying...are you saying that the Planning Commission's kind of a quasi...is a...
It's kinda like, because I had to look it up. I'd never seen it before either.
I've never heard of that.
And I looked it up, and it's like, the legislative is like if they're passing...the city's passing a code or changing a code or doing something. That would be the legislative. The quasi-judicial is when somebody would come before Planning Commission or then City Council and ask you to rule, like somebody's saying, "I want this variance," or whatever else, and you have to rule on it.
Okay.
And you have to...there's a bunch of...because it's a legal kinda thing, there's a bunch of stuff you have to follow to do it correctly.
The quasi-judicial has to do with like when an applicant comes before Planning Commission, wants us to approve something, we approve it. If they don't like the determination, they can appeal it and go before the City Council to get a different ruling.
Okay.
That's where the judicial part of it comes in.
I just...
Did I explain that correctly, Jackie?
Yeah, so that was my fault, Bill, because I asked my question. I just wanted to see you.
All right.
It's not a right or wrong question. It's just that's part of what the Planning Commission is. There's two different legislative and quasi-judicial.
I understand, yeah.
And we have codes and ordinances, and then there's also the rulings we make.
Right, so, yes.
I appreciated it. I learned something from it. Thank you.
Yeah, so legislative, I guess, is the laws, and when you make your rulings, if it's not quite right, then they have a way to go...
Yeah.
Okay. No, I understand. I've just never heard that term.
And you have to be really careful when you're doing the quasi-judicial, because then they can take it on beyond to a regular court.
Right.
Okay.
Go to luba, land use appeals, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yep. That's the next step in the process.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I had a question on the date that you're gonna make the decision. I mean, at the City Council...I'm supposed at the City Council meeting.
Uh-huh. We'll have discussion today, and then it'll be in our packet, and then we will make the announcement on the 26th.
The 26th of...
September.
Okay. Because I...the reason being, I would like to attend. I may not be here.
Okay.
And I don't want that to infer that in any way. I'm not interested. I don't think it's important.
Okay.
But I have prior engagements that I may have to go to, so...
Okay.
But don't interpret that as it's...I don't care about this, so...all right?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for applying.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm taking notes, and then I'll put them on here when I can spell right.
That's what I'm doing.
You, too. Hopefully. I can't get by without the spell check.
I thought the notes were supposed to be part of the...part of the process.
They will be. They are part of the process.
Yes.
They will be.
This has gotta be some of the worst stuff I've ever had.
Really?
They are the code group.
Who made it?
I don't wanna say on record, because I don't wanna slam some companies, but...
That's right.
Your mind is running.
Well, we have a minute.
Yeah.
Oh, look at the brand. You know who that is, don't you?
Quickly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan.
Was that a trap?
No. No, it wasn't, I promise.
Well, I love select stuff. I mean, I love the pasta sauce and the spaghetti sauce.
Oh, I haven't had it. Okay.
It's better than the name brands.
I haven't had it. I wanna learn how to make my own, since Dave had his heart attack. We're like, no salt and whatever, so...
Making marinara is so easy if you do gardening.
Is it?
Oh, my gosh, yeah. It really is.
Well, I can buy tomatoes if I don't do gardening.
Or get it in the can. My father gets the big cans of tomatoes, and he says those are the best flavor for making your sauce, but...
You can get them skinned, too.
Better than fresh.
And you can get them without salt.
And without the skin on them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's...
There's an Italian brand that's the best.
That's the way I wanna do it, then. Okay.
Yeah, it has pictures of these weird lunged tomatoes on it, is all I can tell you.
Some Italian brand.
I think the tomatoes are from Italy. I'm not sure. My father swears by it. It's a white label with a red stripe on the top and bottom, and weird tomatoes.
A drawn, yeah. It's not pictures. It's actually artwork of tomatoes. Yes, I've used them. They're good. Yes, I've used them, they're good.
Yeah, but if, my mother always said, "Ah, it tastes better when you got it from the jar." Takes a lot less work. I think less work is what they, they referred the thing with.
Well, that's what I, that's what I've used before, you know, from Trader Joe's or wherever, but.
If you have to watch the sodium, you might try other sauces, because tomatoes are very high in sodium.
And it will take a while to get used to, but.
Sorry, that's my question with mine.
Well, that's okay.
No, it's a good question!
Fine, there's nothing wrong with it.
I'm impressed that you all researched it, so.
Um, so, your next one is at four P.M., and it's Lynn Nelson. And I just wanted you to know that Tammy Bannick and I reached out in an email and a telephone call, and we have not heard from Lynn. So, he is not here, so we have, I'm assuming we could wait till four fifteen, and we can go, Candace just arrived, we could go ahead and go with her, or we could pause for fifteen minutes and bring her in at four fifteen, and if Lynn shows up before we're done with the interviews, we can bring him up.
I think that sounds like a good idea, if she's here already and she's okay with it. And not depress her mind.
We just go on with her, and then if Lynn shows, then he does, he does the next one.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I believe he might be on vacation. I heard he might be over in Hawaii.
Well, I, we had heard that, and that's why we wanted to make sure we reached out, but we reached out to all three in the same manner, um, and we have not heard from Lynn. So.
You've crossed your Ts and dotted your Is.
Yes. That's my phone. So, if you want me to get Candace, I will.
That's great.
As opposed to talking about spaghetti sauce, which is fine, too.
Well, that was good information, yes, and it's making me hungry.
Can you cook?
Yeah.
And fresh basil, that's all you need, is like, fresh garlic.
Sausage, I do sauces, makes them around garden with, uh.
Cool.
Peppers, basil, tomatoes, onions.
Although my onions didn't do very well this year.
They should have done really well with the heat.
Yeah, I think I overwatered them.
Oh, did they get mushy?
They, they just didn't grow very much, and most of them got mushy.
I gave him some fried tofu, and he ate it.
I also neglected that row there with the potatoes and the onions next to him.
I was surprised.
Leads to very vengeful this year.
So, the first thing I'll have everybody do is introduce themselves. This is the same packet that they have, and yours is a full packet, so, you are at four fifteen. So, that is for you. So, Tom, you want to introduce yourself?
Tom, Mr. Old Councilor.
Libby Wenz, Planning.
Susan Liffen, Citizen at Large.
Lyndon East, Council.
Natalie Smith, Planning Commission.
Bill Osborne, Resident.
You guys are both on committees, though.
I'm the Transportation Safety, TSP.
Oh, I'm on Traffic Safety Committee, and Libby is, too.
Get all that out.
Okay.
I get to ask the first question.
Okay.
Please bear with me. Please explain how your profession, trade, education, or prior or present governmental service qualifies you to serve as a planning commissioner?
Okay, well, um, my profession has recently changed. I'm no longer working at Bogey's Bar. I am now doing, um, working for a company called Envirotest, doing asbestos inspection and lead-based paint testing. Uh, I also am, have a degree from Portland State in Environmental Engineering. I don't have any kind of government experience, but I would like this to be my first. But I feel with my qualifications, with my education, I think that would be, would help.
Oh, I'm, I'm slow in, in making my notes, I'm sorry. Um, okay, number two. How would you respond to community members who disagree with you on a decision you made as a planning commission member?
I would, uh, I have to think on this one. I mean, every situation is different, so it's hard to, you know, just kind of come up with an answer for that. How I would respond? I would have to take in all the facts, uh, see both sides of an argument, and let the facts kind of decide for themselves.
Okay. Um, thank you. Please describe to us what you believe your primary responsibility would be as a planning commission member?
My primary responsibility would to serve the town, to make sure that the, everything is up to code, everything's up to date, um, everybody is, I guess, happy. It's basically about the community, and that's the reason I'm doing this.
Basically about what? I'm sorry.
The community.
The community.
Yes, and I feel that that's my responsibility as a planning, to be on a planning commission, would be to serve the community.
Thank you.
What qualifications and experience are important for us to know about that are not on your application? And how will this help to serve the residents of Gladstone?
Uh, some of the qualifications and experience that are not on my application would probably have to do with my studies at Portland State. Um, one of my, you know, I've done a lot of stream studies on, you know, like, um, Eagle Creek and Johnson Creek and things like that, and I feel that those, those studies would have probably helped with, um, with if I would have been on planning commission already when it came to the wetland properties.
Uh-huh. Okay. And how will this help serve the residents of Gladstone?
I just feel with my background and experience on, um, in school, I just think that it would, sorry, I'm a little nervous on this question right here, I apologize.
Oh, no, take your time.
Uh, how, how to serve the? Again, referring back to the wetlands, um, I think that would have served the residents very well of, um, you know, them not wanting that in their town, and I feel that, um, my experience on cases like that.
Okay.
Would be to serve the residents.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Would you please describe to us how you would prepare for a planning commission meeting? And how you would go about finding out more information on a land use item that you weren't, that you were unsure of?
I already read the planning commission packets.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I've been reading those for, for quite a while. I actually wanted to join planning commission a few years ago, but couldn't because of working Tuesday nights, and there was no way for me to get out of it. So, now that I'm not working there, that's why I'm able to do this now. Um, so, I, like I said, I do already read the planning commission packets. I am, I'm a researcher at heart, so I have no problem going off on different tangents and finding the information that's necessary.
Good. Thank you.
Can you explain the difference between a legislate, legislative and quasi judicial process?
No, I cannot.
It's okay, you're not alone.
Okay.
We all had to look it up, or I had to look it up.
And the only reason I knew is because I'm already on planning commission.
Okay, yeah, I'm not familiar, sorry.
Are you going to read it for her, like?
I can. Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
And then I'll give the layman's terms.
Yeah, yeah, never put it into regular words.
Yeah.
The difference between the two categories is that legislation, legislative decisions are established policies for future applications, while quasi judicial is administrative decisions are the applicants of those policies. A quasi body is an entity such as an arbitrator or a board generally of a public administrative agency which has powers and procedures resembling those of a court of law or judge, and which is obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them so as to provide the basis. You want to give it the layman's terms?
Um, a good example is the Olson Wetlands. Um, based on legislative is what we already work with, with our codes and ordinances for our city, um, and you get two volumes of that that you have to read and learn. Um, but then quasi judicial has to do with the fact when we make a ruling, when planning commission makes a ruling, uh, the only way that can be overturned is if the applicant files an appeal, goes before, uh, goes before the city council to get a different ruling, and if that doesn't work, then the next, uh, the next step is to go to Luba.
Okay.
So, yeah, so there is, that's the quasi judicial.
Okay, and I was here for the planning commission meeting on the Olson, so, yes, I'm, okay.
Yeah.
Now, you've learned something new?
Now, I've learned something new today. I like that.
Thank you.
And do you have any questions of us?
Um, I don't. I am just excited to be sitting here. I wish I was able to do this last time, but was not able to for work, and since the position came open, I figured I might as well try this time, so.
Thank you for applying.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
That was quick and painless, wasn't it?
That was quick and painless, okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck on your new position.
Thank you, I'm really excited.
Okay. I got to rearrange mine.
I think the only person of the applicants that would have known about the difference would have been Lynn.
Lynn.
Yeah, Lynn.
Lynn, yeah, he would have, yeah.
Not only was he on planning commission, he was on city council, too, from a period of time.
Well, that's too bad he didn't let somebody know that he was leaving town.
He probably forgot.
Lynn's still on vacation.
Okay, that's important. He probably forgot.
Okay, at this point, I think that's the, the two applicants that you have, so, um... What we did with the city councils, we wrote down our number one and number two pick, and tallied that vote, and took the majority. We could try that here, or you can talk about it openly. You guys can decide how you would like to discuss the applications.
I'm open to either.
I, same here, I'm open to either. They're both qual, they're both qualified.
Right, and I think, uh, Tammy had sent you information regarding the, the current planning commission and their professions, because with the planning commission, you try to look for a variety, um, and so you could look at the experience and the profession with your two applicants to see how one of them would fit with what's currently on your planning commission, if you're looking for a diverse group.
Well, I don't think either of them would be, um, in conflict with any of that, and.
Nope.
No.
And they both have applicable experience in their professions, too.
It's more the education and the other, the experience.
Exactly. Exactly. Both good candidates.
They've both got different experience. One has a lot of professional experience, being around and working some of the things, where the other has learned from school on a lot of things. Um, I'm not sure I could really say one's better than the other, um, but I don't, uh, Mr. Preble answered questions fairly well.
I would agree with that.
Well, he definitely did the interview and process better, but I don't know that, um, the nervousness of being in front and taking an interview should really be a part of the selection process, because different people handle different, it's scary sitting at that table.
That's a good point, too. I know.
Yeah, panel interviews are tough.
The first few times I got up there just to speak, you know, I was nervous just sitting up in front of a bunch of people, so, can relate to that. I know, uh, Bill Preble is also at a lot of, uh, the meetings, I'm not sure all the committees he goes to or commissions, but I do see him, I go to most of the coffee with the councilors, as well as attend pretty much every council meeting, and I've seen him at just about all of those, it's a familiar face I see in the crowd.
Well, I think either one would, would do a, a great job at it. I, I mean, we're lucky to have had, you know, good applicants. So, we're just going to consider the two that actually interviewed, since we didn't, we weren't able to give an interview to the third, correct?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, just want to be clear on that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, puts me at a disadvantage.
I would agree, too. I just want to be clear.
Are we, do we feel comfortable to go ahead and do a tally already, or should we discuss more, or?
I'm, um, okay, I'm a, I'm a little uncomfortable with how loosey goosey we are, okay?
Comfortable with what?
How loosey goosey we are at this point in time, as far as evaluating. Um, I'm used to having something like, okay, more objective, like, this is what we're looking at, and this is how much weight I'm going to give to this, and this is how much weight to give to whatever. I understand, on the other hand, like Jackie said, that we're just starting down this road, so, I'm hoping that, um, going forward, we will have something. In my own mind, okay, before we came in here from my teaching and interviewing and everything else, I looked at this as, um, if I was going to weight this, I would weight it about, um, seventy percent on number one, which would leave thirty percent. I don't know that we have this in our city, because I'm not familiar with all the rules and laws like the people on the council are. I don't know if we have any kind of affirmative action here or not, but I'm used to, um, looking at affirmative action. If it was a, a person that was like a woman or a Caucasian, I'd give points for that.
This is not an employment personnel.
Okay, gotcha.
Situation, this is a volunteer to a city committee.
So, I can just disregard that part?
Yes.
Okay, then the other thing I would look at is how well I think the person would be able to interact on the board and with other people from the city. Okay, so that would be my other thirty percent, and that's how I would weight it. But that's me.
I know myself, I'm just kind of looking at experiences, um, what kind of experience or education people have. I think education is important, but I think hands-on experience is, is more important than education, I think, um, learning how to do something and actually doing it.
And Bill stated that he had no land use experience, and even though she doesn't have it either, and they, but they're both willing to put themselves out there and go do the research, so I, you know, I think you've got, you've got equal value here and that, too.
Well, also, um, I just retained John Morgan, who is a consultant for Oregon Land Use that is going to do a two-day training for the city council and the planning commission in November, and he is going to come and talk about the roles and responsibilities of both governing bodies. And so, the point of me telling you that is that whoever is selected is going to get Oregon Land Use training.
Good.
In November, uh, for this, the whole entire board is, not just that person.
Um, looking at, um, the municipal code right here and consideration for qualifications, um, is, there's never been a set criteria on how, how we are to evaluate a potential candidate for planning commission, other than being a citizen of Gladstone. Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, historically, all the applications generally just go to the city council, and they vote on them at a public... and they vote on them at a public meeting. So, this is a process that the mayor has asked for, but it is not in the city code, the charter, or the council rules.
Okay, so we have no set criteria at all to base our evaluation judgments?
Right, and that's why it's only a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, the municipal code, chapter 2.28.080, consideration of qualifications for membership states. I'm taking that to mean that that is part of our city code.
That's correct, but this group-
Doesn't base how we decide.
Right.
Yeah.
We're just making a recommendation, not an appointment, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's how we are looking at what our city code asks.
Yeah, and it's talking about professions, and that's it. It doesn't list- it needs to have- you need to have this type of qualification, this kind of background, this kind of experience. Like a job application where it says, you know, please don't-
It says preference will be given to these individuals.
But it doesn't say what the profession trade is.
It's who possesses a particular competence in the field of municipal planning by way of their profession, trade, prior or present governmental service.
Municipal planning would not be demonstrated particularly by being in construction. That construction is following directions, which is a good thing, to be able to read and follow the directions.
Would it be demonstrated by working with the state and federal on land use planning?
With working with them?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Having to implement their codes when you're working?
Uh, no, because it depends on which part, and we don't really know that. And my husband was in, a contractor. So, I understand from the construction side how that goes.
A construction side, though, might be different. I understand what a person in construction does, and they also have to work with codes.
Well, my husband is an electrical contractor. I'm very well aware of that.
So-
But they are not making decisions about the codes, they're following the codes.
Yes, and-
Might make them more familiar with the codes.
Familiarity with those codes could be helpful. And knowing where to go to ask questions if you don't know about a code or understand it could also be helpful. All that could be helpful. Education can be helpful, and on-the-job experience can be helpful. I'm just looking at this, and I'm thinking that it is- it is stating something that preference will be given to individuals with this. And as I look at the, I don't know, we had a list of what the people that are on the planning commission have now. It came out in an email. I still don't have it.
We have a Multnomah County sheriff, self-employed sales manager, self-employed software engineer, administrator, office manager, retired grocery business, and a field representative for the US Census.
We don't really have anybody with much background in codes, and we're actual working with it.
Nope.
We're a little bit deficient there.
Yeah, that's why if there's- moving forward, if there was wanting- if the city wants to have criteria as how to base decisions, that would be something that would need to be looked at, because there currently isn't any criteria specific.
You don't think that a preference will be given is a specific enough?
It's not specific about the profession or trade, in my opinion. That is not specific. I mean, honestly, I've worked for the government for years.
Doing what?
This, I would not- I was- when I worked for the state of Florida, I was the supervisor, and I had to follow the code, so to speak, and I had to hire people. And everything had to be very clear about-
How long ago was that?
I think we're getting off topic here.
Off topic here. I think we're getting off topic here.
What we're- what we're-
Trying to.
We're not- we're not doing an employee hire. We're doing a volunteer committee. City council has said, hey, we want you to do these interviews and make a recommendation to us. It seems that the consensus is that either one is- has the ability to learn and would be a very good volunteer. What you guys need to decide is, do you want to do a vote on one or the other? Do you want to write it down, or- and at least see where you are with your choices?
I think we could do a vote. The other thing to remember, too, this appointment's just to the end of this year, so it's not a-
It's what?
It expires on the 31st of December this year. So, it's a very short duration, and then people will be reapplying.
Then they'll have to reapply, yeah.
And my hope would be that the person that's not selected would reapply at that time, too, because this is a good- this is a good problem to have. We want dedicated volunteers to be part of our committees.
And I also know that his- looking back on history, the person that's leaving this vacancy had- he was an electrician, had all kinds of experience with codes and everything else, and he was excellent. And I'm really sorry that he had to go.
Yeah, he resigned his position. And we miss Dennis.
I bet you do.
I agree with Bill. I think we're ready to go ahead and- I agree with him. Is everybody else in agreement? We can write down what our choices would be, a tally?
Do you have a piece of paper up there? Or do you need paper?
I have post-it notes.
Here.
I like the post-it notes.
Oh, yeah, perfect. I've got a tablet. A Gladstone tablet. Who wants a piece of paper? You want us to do one and two, what our first and second choice? How do you want us to do this?
Write your choice down, just one person, and see how it would be there.
Okay.
It's okay.
I thought you had one.
So, we write just one choice?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just see who your pick is.
There you go.
I don't know if I spelled it right.
Yeah. Shared it with everybody.
All right, so does this committee agree that if there's a majority in here, that you will go with the majority on this pick?
I do.
I do.
No comment.
No comment.
I got me out. I got my- I got myself in trouble last time, and I'm not going to put myself on the ledge for that.
Susan, Libby, Tom, would you- you would, Tom?
As far as this vote?
Yes.
I consensus, in my mind, it's got to be it.
Okay. So, if there's a majority in here of one person, you guys will make that recommendation?
There's a majority, I will say yes to it.
Okay, that's all I was asking. So, I have four for Bill Preble and two for Candace. So, that would mean the majority would be for Bill Preble.
Okay.
So, does this committee agree that that will be the recommendation in the staff report to the city council?
I do.
I do?
I do.
Okay. I think we're finished, and I'm going to turn off the audio and the video.
So, will he- will they get to know now? Will they get to know ahead of time? That's another thing I think's important, that they know ahead of time, so that they're- they should at least know, even if they're asked to not say anything.
Can't be final until there's a final vote by the council.
What hours? They shouldn't be told they got it, but I think that- I think they should be told if they didn't.
Of our recommendation.
That they didn't get our recommendation. I- I don't know. You know what I'm saying? But you see what I'm saying? So, we don't have a thing where they're set up again?
I agree completely with you, Libby. I think that at this point in time, our recommendation should be made public to the applicants, at least.
Right, and it will be made public to the city council, because we're putting the packet together tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll know about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I will-
Just so they know, and they understand that it could change, but just so nobody thinks that they got it for sure.
Just to be clear, that's-
That was a mistake last time.
No, it was not, Libby. That's the process that was in place last time, because I made those phone calls to the applicants.
He misunderstood.
Oh, okay.
He misunderstood.
That's too bad.
Yeah, it was for everybody.